Welcome and good evening to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this Monday, April 2, 2018, after 7:30 PM. Hopefully, everyone enjoyed the snow that greeted us this morning. It sure looked nice and thank God it didn't stick on the roadway. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, April 16, 2018. If you would please, Mr. Paulo, call the roll.
Sanders.
Here.
Silvestri.
Here.
Warden.
Here.
Ansel.
Here.
Gavin.
Here.
Bastancic.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
All present and accounted for do have an acquorum. There will be a little change in the agenda right after the last piece of legislation under new business. We intend to go into executive session. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the members of city council in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a special guest tonight, Mr. Bob Kalish. He's with the Ohio Secretary of State's office, and he has an award to present to the city of Worcester. Welcome, Mr. Kalish, and thank you for coming.
All right, well, thank you. On behalf of Secretary of State John Houston, it was recognizing the office that it was -- I had a commendation for your site selection magazines list of 2017 top metropolitan community in the United States as being ranked third in site selections magazine from 2017. We'd like to give this commendation a proclamation. The mayor and council president, you'd like to come down?
Sure.
Favor?
Yeah, we'll get a photo.
Okay. And so I want to be like -- I'm sorry, hold up for being for a pro-. It might be a fine. We have an experience, John Houston, I will give this following agreement, part of this commendation proclamation. City of Worcester is my privilege to recognize and commend you being ranked third in the site selection magazines list of 2017 top metropolitan communities in the United States. And this certificate, this commendation is tendered on behalf of the people of the state of Ohio with a small token of their sincere gratitude and admiration. And throughout your hard work and dedication to developing a favorable business climate here in the city of Worcester and your community have earned this coveted recognition. As Ohio's 53rd Secretary of State is my privilege and unique distinction to recognize and command the great city of Worcester on this honor. Congratulations. Signed from Secretary of State John Houston. All right. Thank you, and may God bless this great city of Worcester. Governor, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwomen and men, thank you for your service.
Now, sat down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for making the trip.
All right, thanks. Are you on the council?
And I might add, it was a team effort between the city administration and council to earn those accolades. Okay, turn to looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the March 19, 2018 meeting. So move. Motion to approve by Mr. Ansel is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, please say nay, and the minutes are approved for March 19, 2018. Well, Mayor, that was a good lead in to your portion of the meeting, having Mr. Kalish here from the Secretary of State's office.
We always love to be recognized by the state as doing the right things here in our city and in the state of Ohio, so absolutely very, very kind recognition to that. Just a few things to report to you. Since our last gathering, we were able to attend the Wayne Economic Development Council annual meeting. Mark McGrath from Scheffler Group was the speaker and did a pretty awesome job of explaining what Scheffler is and does and their plans for the future. So exciting things going on, and we are sure appreciative of that group being our largest employer here in Worcester. Got the opportunity and privilege to attend a ribbon cutting for J. and K. Gifts. It's the newest store opening on our square. It's where Poppy used to be, real nice little gift shop there. Two sisters started it up in Medina about 10 years ago, and this is their second store. So we're real pleased and privileged to have them be a part of our business community here in our downtown. Had meetings, just normal meetings of the fog dispatch group, Worcester Community Hospital, Bi-Ohio boards, and we just met this morning with the county over the 201, 208 sewerage plans that need to be submitted to NEFCO for review and approval. That's a 10-year plan that we have to abide by, so everybody has their districts planned out. And lastly, the asphalt plants are getting very close to opening, so as soon as we get the hot stuff, we're going to be able to be out there fixing these roads up properly. So thanks for bearing with the pothole season, but I think it's finally starting to come close to an end here in the next weeks. So that's everything I have for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And since we're on the portion of the administration, I don't know about you, but it seems members of the administration keep getting younger and younger.
We're grooming them.
Okay, we don't have any communications from the public, but we do have a liquor license petition for a license at B&amp;T stations on Bell Avenue, which is where the Sunoco station is. If you would just briefly read it, please, Mr. Paulo, we can determine what we want to do.
Petition from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, B&amp;T Stations LLC, 209 Bell Avenue, Worcester, Ohio, 44691. They're requesting a C1 and a C2 permit.
All right. We have three options. We can ask for a hearing here in the city of Worcester, ask for a hearing down in Columbus, or waive the hearing on the petition. Someone have a motion?
Motion to waive hearing.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the waiver of the hearing?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, we'll waive hearing, and I know you've got a ton of things to do, but if you can let them know down there at the Department of Liquor Control that we'll waive the hearing, I appreciate it, Mr. Paulo.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I will recuse myself.
All right, but we still have committee reports and public hearings, which we have none. Now you may be recused. Let the record reflect that Mr. Ansel has recused himself from the decision-making portion of the council temporarily. We have one item under whole business, it's the second reading of ordinance number 2018-07. If you would, Mr. Paulo, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2018-07, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Baker Properties Mount Vernon LLC and Compact Inc. for certain tax incentives.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Biden died. This is the application that we reviewed at the last meeting. I'd like to open it up for any further conversation or questions the council may have. I will be asking to waive the rules in order to move this to third and final. The applicant has met all the guidelines the application requires. It's been recommended by the city of Worcester as well as the Worcester Schools Board of Education. I'd like to see us go ahead and move this forward. Construction on these kinds of facilities, as we will see in later, some of our later items that we're looking at, where Roger Koberlarsch suggests that earlier passage allows for more competitive bidding and construction-type projects, that would be the same for this particular applicant. So I'd like to possibly move this forward, get it passed, or at least load it on this evening, so.
Do you want to move to suspend the rules, then we can have discussion if the rules pass.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Oh, he's not.
Never mind.
So the rules are suspended. Do you have a motion for us, Mr.?
Yes, motion to approve ordinance number 2018-07.
Motion to approve by Mr. Myers is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. Now we can discuss it further.
Does anybody on council have anything further this evening? Yes, Mr. Bastancic.
Last meeting, I discussed this in link with our director of development, but there were two reasons last week why -- oh, last meeting when I voted no on taking to third and final. One was, I think we need -- I think this was an important piece of legislation that really needed more discussion. I believe if you're going to give a developer a half million dollars' worth of abatements, it needs more than four days' notice. We got -- I knew about it on Wednesday. I talked to developer on Wednesday. I don't know how much other -- if other council members had a prior notice much earlier than that, but the agenda comes out on Thursday, and that very much leaves council four days to research the subject. So I think we need more time in the future to discuss these things. The other reason, I didn't want to go third and final, I wanted to express my opinions on the subject of industrial tax abatements and whether or not they are actually good public policy, which I think in general they are not. And I would like to see council in the future to perhaps do some independent research on their own as to what's out there in the literature and what the preponderance of evidence shows on these. And if we're going to give a half million dollars to a developer to do this, actually school system money, it's mostly not -- mostly not city of Worcester's money. I mean, if you look at over 10 years, that's enough to support the hiring of one full plan teacher that we are pretty much giving up. But I just hope to start the discussion and go from there. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And as you and I discussed earlier, I think that that topic is a good one to have a conversation regarding the level of abatements that we issue and what could be looked at as address to make them be incentives for new business and business locations. There's any further discussion from?
Nothing.
I have something to add. Some of us on this council are businessmen themselves or women, and sometimes, you know, everyone looks like we're giving money away. Well, this is money that was never in the coffers. Secondly, frankly, when a business is willing to commit millions of dollars in improvements, sometimes, you know, we're asking them to invest in the city, you know, and why shouldn't the city invest somewhat back in terms of these abatements in the business who wants to throw millions of dollars not away, but into improving a piece of property? So I look at abatements kind of like an investment by the city to say, hey, we're glad you're putting money in and, you know, we are confident enough and happy enough to have you in, we're willing to cut your taxes for a while. So, you know, as the old saying goes, I don't see a problem with the city having some skin in the game. That's my opinion.
Well, the flip side would be, you know, we're a top metropolitan in the United States. We're a great place to set up business, but I digress. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bastancic?
Part of, I think, the discussion, I think it's, I hope, I wish the developer good luck with his plan. My disagreements with it have nothing to do with his plan to improve the property and to create a few jobs and so forth. My plan, my problem is, I think we're giving money away for something in most cases will be done anyway. Most people, most industries come to Worcester because we have the business basics. We have a good school system. We have good infrastructure. We have good police protection, we have good fire protection, and we have good workers here. That's why they come here. Now, if they're coming for the abatement, they have a really bad business plan because they feel like us, one of us buying a house, but we're going to, but we can't afford to pay the property taxes. That's what it comes down to. If we're going to give them as a reward, we should, we should say, if we're going to be honest about it, we should say, well, we're giving this as a reward for coming here. Not they didn't come here for the abatement, but we're giving the abatement because they came here. And I think we have to be honest with the taxpayers about what we're really doing here. Is it a gift? Is it a reward? What is it? And I think we need to have that discussion, and just don't take my word for it, do the research on it. There's a lot of stuff if you Google on it. There are books out there, tons of magazine articles. I'm not saying everybody supports my position, but I think it's something that should be researched. If we're going to give a half million dollars away, which should have gone to the school system, I think that behooves city council to do, to do research on the subject. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money that could have gone to the school system and should, in my opinion, should have gone. Now, the city looks at it like the developer has a 75% 10-year abatement. The city looks at like the glass is one quarter full. We have philosophy difference here. I look at it as three quarters empty. What we should have had and what we could have had, rather than, rather than we had that small amount to begin with. And we need to look at that, whether that's good public policy. Is that smart? Is that, is that smart money? And we need to look at what it really does. Like I said earlier, is it a gift, or what is it? It should be in the business of giving industries gifts. It's not our money. It's actually going, it's school system money in it. So I think that's my whole point.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr.?
I would like to say, I think I agree with you on principle, and I think that it's important that, you know, as a group, we have this discussion in the future, but in terms of the particular item that's in front of us, I think we can all agree that the developer in question has already put a lot of time and money into local business community and infrastructure, and for that, I think the discussion maybe is poor timing. I feel like it's something that we should talk about, but I, but I'd hate to hinder his progress any further with it.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I agree, I don't think that Mr. Bastancic can, he and I've talked one-on-one, is anything at all to do with Mr. Baker's project. I hope for, Mr. Baker, I know you're here this evening, hopefully you understand that that's not his intention nor anyone here. We're, I think in agreement, I at least am supporting your project. So the conversation around the abatement is, again, something I think we should probably have at an appropriate time, so.
Exactly, I agree. It's not, it's not, nothing against the project or so on, it's just what we're doing for the project.
Very good. That being said, I think I'd like to call for, oh, wait, we've got a motion to approve?
Right, any further, any further from council?
No.
Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
No.
Gavin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ward? Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-07 passes. That brings us to new business, resolution number 2018-022. And let the record reflect that Mr. Ansel has returned to his seat and has come back from his recusal, so. If you would, please read the resolution, Mr. Paulo.
Sure. Resolution number 2018-022, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for sanitary sewer rehabilitation work at various locations in the city of Worcester.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, and I should put, remind you, it's budgeted.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, yes, this is budgeted, estimated at about $200,000 on the sanitary sewer fund. And as the clerk just read, there's some rehabilitation work that needs done on some sanitary sewer lines, really all over the city. But a big piece of that, this, is sewer lining, sewer lining, and we try to do this on an annual basis, if at all possible. And it's really just as much to keep groundwater out as it is to keep sanitary sewer effluent in. So interesting fact that we don't want to take on groundwater and then have to process all that extra volume. So we want to keep our sanitary sewer lines as sealed and contained as possible to make the process efficient, and so we're not processing extra volumes of water that we don't need to be processing. So again, this is budgeted, it's something that we need to keep up with on a regular maintenance-type basis, and there's probably too many locations to even list, although when Roger and I talked, there are certain problem areas that he's aware of that I think he and his team do try to focus on, and he's here to answer any specific questions that anyone might have. I will be asking, I will be making a motion to approve this evening.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. Any further discussion here?
Can I ask, Mr. Koberlarsch, the lining that goes into the pipes, is that something that is purchased separately, or is that already something that's like, is it a coating inside of the pipes, or?
What it is, it's, they soak, you know, resin, they soak the in-lining, and it goes inside the pipe, inside out.
Okay.
And then they put hot steam in, and then it cures to the pipe, so it turns out to be plastic.
It's like fiberglass.
It's like fiber, yeah.
Okay.
But they soak it with the resin, and they blow it in the pipe from manhole to manhole, put hot steam in, and then it cures, so.
And have we?
And then they go in, they cut out all the laterals, so.
Have we been using pipes with that treatment for some time now? Yeah?
Yes. We try to do it every year. We did some last year. What we do is, we work with the distribution and collection people, and they tell us what are the problem areas. They video it, if there's ionized, if there's more groundwater coming in, that's one, go higher on the list. There's an area where they have to go out and jet it so often, but we'll put that high on the list, so.
Okay, thank you.
How long does this remediation last, do we know? I know it's, I know they've been doing it since I've been on council.
Pretty much permanent.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, it certainly keeps the infiltration, you know, because, you know, the pipes, I know the pipes gap, and this repairs those.
Does the new piping come with this already on?
Pardon?
No? Is it, it's not something that?
This is an alternative to actually digging everything up and replacing the pipe, which is much more expensive. So it's not, not everywhere is a good application for it, but areas where it's just cracked and water roots coming in, and when roots come in, they grow, that's where you get blockages as well, so.
Anything else from council? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2018-022 passes, brings us to resolution 2018-023. Would you please read the title, Mr. Paulo?
Resolution number 2018-023, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a new storm sewer serving East University Street from Quinby Avenue to Beaver Street.
Okay, I turn to you again, Mr. Silvestri. The floor is yours.
All right, last one was for sanitary sewer, this is for storm sewer, so it will be coming out of that respective fund. This is budgeted, and the new storm sewer will be along East University Street from Quinby Avenue to Beaver Street. It does involve 1,235 linear feet of storm sewer, 10 catch basins, and six storm manholes. And we have planned ahead, there was storm sewer constructed along Quinby Avenue in anticipation of this project. So again, this is budgeted, so we don't need to suspend the rules. It's something that we've been looking at doing and be glad to tie into the one piece of sanitary, I'm sorry, storm sewer that's already there. So if there's any further questions, happy to entertain those at this time. I do, I do move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri is our second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Warden. Any further, anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-023 passes. We have the first reading of resolution number 2018-024. It too will be presented by Mr. Silvestri, and like the other two resolutions that he's presented, it is budgeted. Would you please read the title, Mr. Paulo?
Resolution number 2018-024, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of the water lines and resurfacing the pavement on Oakley Road and Brookside Drive.
And as they used to say in the variety shows, take it away, Mr. Silvestri.
Okay, we've dipped out of both funds, and this one comes out of both funds. So we're having some come out of capital, some come out of the water fund, some come out of the sanitary sewer fund, and then we do have $426,000 of OPWC money. So that is a blessing for our community that we get to tap into that, those extra funds. So what we're going to be doing is replacing approximately 5,500 linear feet of 6-inch cast iron water line. This water line has a history of breaks, and that's going to be replaced. It's on Brookside Drive, and it's near Christmas Run Boulevard, and that's going to be replaced with 8-inch ductile iron, and we're going to have 45 water service laterals coming off that, along with nine fire hydrants, and this project also includes pavement resurfacing on both Oakley and Brookside Drives. So, oh, one other note, it's always good, from an engineering perspective, to create a waterline loop, and I believe from what I was told, we're going to be doing that here. So it cuts down on the amount of stagnant water if you can loop the water line and have it, you know, draw from, from both directions. So an improvement to our water system for sure. If there's any questions, we can entertain them at the appropriate time, but I hereby do move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion?
Are there any, are there any assessments that the residents in the neighborhood will be receiving?
No.
So the, the cost of connecting the water services is, will be covered by the capital fund or the OPWC monies, is that?
Yeah, it'll be new, new water line up to the curb box.
They're just replacing a pipe that's giving us headaches, so.
Okay.
I'm sure your crew and Mr. Denning's crew won't miss going out there in the middle of winter to fix a break in that line.
Just, just for the sake of any residents who might be affected, what kind of a timeframe, is there any lag between in-water service when we switch these over?
Well, first, after, there's minimal, minimal water.
Okay. So, it's just a matter of same day we?
Everybody's, everybody's notified, it usually takes, you know, an hour, two hours to do each new one.
So, it's pretty seamless, out with the old, in with the new. So, okay. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastianzik?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number 2018-024 is passed. We'll look at resolution number 2018-025. It will be presented by Mr. Bastianzik. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Bastianzik, I will have, if you would, Mr. Pollan, read the title.
Resolution number 2018-025. A resolution declaring the necessity of construction sidewalks on Northwestern Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastianzik, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. This is a request to declare the necessity of construction sidewalks on the west side of Northwestern Avenue, north of Parkview, and south of Hamilton, and establish preliminary assessments for affected property owners. The total sidewalk assessment, assessment length is 735 feet with an assessment of 2660. These assessments are based 10, on 10% of the cost of sidewalk portion of a, of a project, I'm sorry, of a project similar to what was assessed completing the sidewalks on a previous Safrauc school project. The total cost is estimated at $86,000. The assessments would be 2660, and what this legislation do, will give the administration the go-ahead to do the assessments, and then they could, then from there, they can go to further legislation to complete the project.
Roger?
Yeah, this is just for resolution of necessity, what we do, we send out notice, we have to notice to the property owners if they don't do the sidewalk themselves, and they have 30 days to do that, if not, then we don't do it. Basically, it's cheaper to pay the assessment by us, but. Just complete these sidewalks over there, be sure that whole area.
That was, that whole area was designated by Safrauc School.
Mr. Sylvester?
That was what we had referred to, is that, that was over a year ago, the Northwestern West Ridge, maybe two years ago now?
Yeah, two or three.
Okay. So, so that completes that whole picture.
And this is just to allow us to send out notice, people still have an opportunity, if they don't like the assessment, to, you know, for this, do we also have a board?
We can.
No equalization board.
No equalization board. But they do have an opportunity to complain about their assessment.
That's, yeah, 30 days.
Yeah, yeah. But this is just to start the process, this is in the actual assessment.
If there are any further questions, I would like to put this on third and final so the administration can continue with the project. Kind of timely manner.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastianzik is there, second? Second, Mr. Cavan. Would you call the rules, or call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastianzik?
Yes.
Do you have another motion for us, Mr. Bastianzik?
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastianzik is there, second? Second, Mr. Cavan. Any further questions, comments? You're off the hook on this one yet, Roger, so seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastianzik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-025 passes. Our final piece of legislation for this evening. Resolution number 2018-026. It is also gonna be presented by Mr. Bastianzik. Guess it was the Bill and Dave Show tonight with a little side interest by Mr. Myers. It's scheduled for three readings. As far as I could interpret, it's one of those that has the ODOT attachment to it, so. Before I get to you, again, Mr. Bastianzik, I will ask kindly if Mr. Pollan will please read the title.
Resolution number 2018-026. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 83 within the city of Worcester and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastianzik, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. ODOT is planning on repaving 83 South to Holmesville. A small portion of that is within the city limits, and our cost will be 20% of the project within the city limits, which will be about, a little over $11,000, that's about $11,200, or $11,300. And this will give the Ohio Director of Transportation consent to complete the project. Pretty much, pretty, fairly basic on that.
So, if they plan to save it, so, the resolution 2018. So, if the budget time comes along, I'll put this in the budget for next one.
But this tees it up so they can do all the preliminary work, right-of-ways, or see anything that needs to be moved.
Yeah, they can do all their plans, get all the funding.
Any other questions? I'd like to put this on third and final.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll take it as a motion, Mr. Bastianzik. Is there a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Ms. Ward, if you would, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Bastianzik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, Mr. Bastianzik.
Move to adopt?
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastianzik, second by Mr. Cavan. Either that or you were calling for the right-hander to come in and pinch hit. Any further questions, comments?
I have one question that, it might be silly, but, Mr. Koberlarsik, maybe you could clarify this for me. In item six of section three, there is a sentence that says, "Those items requested by the city which are determined to be unnecessary by the state or federal highway administration for the intent of this project." Do you have an idea of what that might be? I mean, I'm guessing it's something along the lines of signage, but.
If there's an area that we think needs repair, then they don't.
Okay.
We retain it.
Thank you. I just thought that was an interesting statement. Thank you.
If there's danger, we're going to.
Gotcha.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Ansel?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-026 passes. That concludes the legislative portion, and now has been requested for executive session.
I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Second? Second by Mr., motion by Mr. Cavan. What I'm trying to say, this is to discuss potential legal liability?
That's correct.
Okay. That was what I was trying, grasping for. Second by Mr. Ansel. You would call the roll on the motion for executive session. I appreciate it.
Bastianzik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Okay. We are now off the record, and we're going into executive session. Okay. We're back at council chambers, but before we go officially on the record, would the clerk please, first I'll ask for a motion to?
Motion to come out of executive session, Mr. President.
All right. Motion to come out of executive session by Mr. Ansel is there, second? Second, Mr. Cavan. Temporary incompetent clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion to come out of executive session? Bastianzik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
We're officially out of executive session. Moving right into miscellaneous, and we'll start with the same. Mr. Bastianzik?
Yes, just one thing. I got a call from John Albright this morning, and he, we were supposed to meet, we were gonna come down and talk to you and about something tomorrow, but he couldn't make it. He found out he's gotta have open-heart surgery in the next few days. He's having a triple bypass. So, I'd just like to wish him and his family luck.
Yes.
And be recovered, so.
Our thoughts and prayers to John and his family, that's for sure. Okay, Mr. Cavan?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I want to thank the city and, and the council for all the passage of the ordinance tonight. I want to make a note that my colleague here did succeed in having to spend over a million dollars on his projects this evening. I totaled up, and, and, well done.
He beat my record for the first name.
It's always good to spend money on the infrastructure. There was a, a letter to the editor that I thought was kind of well-written, it was